Okay, good evening, everybody. I'm gonna call together the Bridgewater Town Council re precincting workshop to order. It is Monday, October 25th, 2021 at 7:00 PM. Pursuant to section 20 of chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, this meeting of the town council for the town of Bridgewater will be fully remote and accessible to the public through remote participation in the greatest extent possible. There will be no in-person attendance permitted. Citizens wish to tune into the meeting may do so by a Zoom or Facebook Live. I'm gonna go ahead and go right into our first agenda item, which is re precincting legislation discussion. I'd like to keep it very formal. I want everybody to have an opportunity to give their opinion and I'm hoping that we form some sort of consensus amongst all of us and get all of our questions answered tonight. Maybe not all of them, but a good majority of them. And Council Chase has worked very hard in the background to put a brief presentation together as an explanation for the council. So I'm gonna go ahead and defer to Council Chase.
Well, thank you, Mr. President. Can you all hear me well?
Yes.
Okay. Josh, would you be able to display that first PDF, the one that's entitled the re precinct thing, I think it is?
Yep, I'll get that put up on the screen.
Thanks. Okay. That's great. So, as I began to think about this, I was inclined to really give more thought to all the possible, I'll call them permutations, as to how the districts could be constructed. And it seemed to me that there were really many more possibilities than I, than I at least at first envisioned. So I began to play with that a bit, and this was my first attempt to use an example. And this example is precinct one. This is the new precinct one, in other words, as it appears on the precinct map, the nine precinct map that was distributed by Merrill Lee. And so, for example, so we're beginning with that precinct column, we're looking at precinct one. It abuts, it directly abuts three other precincts, seven, two, and four. And obviously, it must, to prepare a district for this, it must include at least one of the abutting districts. It could include two. Now, I also have a column for contiguous precincts. Okay, so those are precincts which also connect in a linear manner to one of either seven, two, or four. And so when you follow the process out, in the final column, it's called possible districts, you see, I'll say mathematically. Mathematically, you see all the possible combinations that could produce a three precinct district. But then I had to go back to the map and look at it in terms of, you know, just not the math, but what is or is not contiguous. And so those ones that are highlighted in yellow, I had to strike out. So that's why it's not simply a matter of math alone. You know, like multiplying the three abutting times the three contiguous. Because we had to factor in what is actually physically possible. So that's what I tried to do, to come up with the possible districts for precinct one. And I called it the simplest example. There's actually maybe one that's a little more simple, but this is the first one I saw, and it looked pretty easy. So this is sort of just the methodology. So, you know, stop me if you have any questions at this point before I go on to like the next one. I thought I sent this out to you all a few days ago. Today, I sent out a following PDF, and maybe Josh, if I can ask you to bring that one up in lieu of this. Everyone's in stunned silence. Okay, great, thank you. All right, so this is another PDF. This one's in two pages, just because I had to do that to capture all the data. So this shows all of the possible potential districts that can be created based on each one of our precincts on the new map. So we have the precinct number, what are the abutting precincts, what are the contiguous precincts, and what are the possible combinations that are actually doable? The only other information here is you'll see that small number in parentheses under the precinct number. And that shows, as you can see by looking at number one, it shows eight for precinct one. And what that means is there are eight possible potential districts, just as you can see in the chart. And there were 20 for precinct two, et cetera. And the second page just continues right through precinct nine. So I thought this was significant, because when we start to create districts, let's suppose we're creating a district for precinct one, and we decide that one, seven, and eight, the very first selection there is an appropriate district. We want to create that district out of those three precincts. Once we do, of course, one, seven, and eight immediately come out of the universe that, you know, we're pulling numbers from. They've been used once, they can't be used again. Okay, so this universe of numbers begins to shrink really rapidly. So my theory was, if we begin with whatever precincts have the least number of possibilities, it might make sense, because we've got to take care of them first. When we get up to some of the others, like we're looking at precinct two, it has 20 possible combinations. So there's many more variables there that we can work with as compared with precinct one, or say precinct three. So we've really, I thought we've really got to like focus on those, you know, those precincts that might be more difficult, that don't have a lot of options, and then work our way, you know, through the, through the group of other precincts. So that's the general gist of what I had looked at over the course of, you know, Friday and the weekend and what I wanted to show to you. Now, I'm assuming tonight that we'd like to pay attention to actually creating districts. That's up to all of you, and, you know, we can proceed to go ahead and do it. Maybe if we could shift back to the, to the map for a moment, Josh? All right, so this is the nine precinct map that I think was prepared actually by the state and Merrily circulated to us in her presentation. And I had this one copied from it. It is unfortunately in black and white, but for that reason, I went over the boundaries with a Sharpie to try to more carefully delineate them. And by the way, and I made this comment in the email to all of you on Friday, I think it was. Three of us are gonna wake up on the first morning of this new map, and we're going to be in different precincts than we were the day before. That pertains to myself, to Frank, and to Matt. Now, one way of looking at this, I thought, is, and this is up to each one of you individually. You might look at the map of our nine precincts and think, well, maybe there are some community, certain communities of interest. In other words, maybe certain, a certain configuration of precincts makes sense because those particular residents have, you know, particular problems or, you know, some issues in common. And that may be true. You know, for example, maybe if we were to envision a district right down through the center of the, of the map, in other words, kind of following Route 18, let's say, right? Maybe we would consider that like the, the high-density corridor. And maybe there, those residents have greater concerns as to traffic and safety and noise, things like that. Whereas if you look here on the far east, at, you know, precincts, you know, nine, for example, which is, which will be my new precinct, you know, so maybe our concerns are more along, you know, the lines of open space preservation and things like that. Now, you can make that argument, and you can decide to yourselves, you know, is there really a community of interest by grouping certain precincts together to address that? But at the same time, there's a mitigating factor. I think you have to consider that by adopting this model of representation that we have, in other words, having six at-large counselors and three district counselors, we are necessarily putting more emphasis on town-wide representation as opposed to district representation. And that can cut both ways. Maybe you can think that's good, or maybe you can, maybe you think that we should work to, you know, sort of ameliorate that a little bit by, you know, focusing on communities of interest, as I've called them. So this is as I see what our job is, if we are to begin to tackle it tonight. And if we were, we could begin to talk about districts and talk about constructing them, all looking at the same map. That was the reason I wanted to have this available to us this way. I wish it were a little more clear, but maybe we can work on that. And for example, if we began to construct the district map, and let's say we, just for the sake of convenience here, decided that we were gonna begin here with, you know, District Nine, this happens to be my district, of course. Well, once we take it out of the mix, you know, we could make it clear to everyone, okay, District Nine is now gone because we've decided we're going to group it with District Three and District Four, which are all contiguous. So we can immediately see, all of us, that these districts are off the list. This is what we have to work with now. So I don't know that I have any more of an introduction to that, to this than what I've told you. Really, at this point, I'd love to hear anybody say anything.
I'd say something. I'll say something. I'll say something if I could.
Yeah, Council Gallagher, I just, I would say to the council, as long as we're respectful, just feel free to jump in and make your comments. I just want to keep it like an open forum discussion, not so formal.
Okay. All right, thank you. No, Fred, Council Chase, thank you for the work you did. It's, I'm gonna play all these numbers tomorrow in exact order. Any order, and see how I make out, but I appreciate the work you did. But I guess from what I'm hearing is, I know we haven't taken a formal vote as a council that we want three districts and six at-large yet. I don't think, I think that was kind of the majority discussion, but there were a couple of councils that had a few other thoughts, but we did adopt the nine precinct model at the last meeting, but we haven't officially said three and six.
Correct.
But I do think that, yeah, I think although there's a lot of different scenarios, the arguments to have district counselors were to keep it more local into what's in your area. So I would say we try to keep them, keep the three districts at least close, you know, close geographically, although that's even gonna be hard, but but I appreciate the work you did. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you. Bill, we'll go right ahead.
Yeah, thanks. So, you know, I've had this discussion with a couple different outside people. So it always seems to me that a lot of the issues around Bridgewater are separated as, as, as Counselor Chase said, into like an east-west-center structure. And so if we could only have three representatives for regional areas, you know, I would try to, try to probably describe it in that way, in the east side, a west side, and a central area. I think the challenge again, and, you know, I know your picture's black and white. I'm looking at a picture I took in the, in the office the other day. Five is still kind of the challenge, right? So it's in the middle. It's got a lot of the university, because that's what they blocked us with. And so then, then in my mind, it's, it's kind of difficult, because it's, is it really, is it really a central block, or is it a west block? And then the other one that's kind of landlocked without boundaries is two, because everything else kind of touches another, another town, right? So, but, but my thoughts were east-west-central, if we do that. I mean, optimally, you know, I would still hope that we would maybe, I think it's on outside reach, go for nine district counselors, and then we're more recent, and then we're more, you know, local in nature, but I think we're probably gonna end up with the mix, so. I think that, and Fred, I like your permutations, that's exciting math there. I think if we look at five and try to figure out where does five belong in the, you know, discussion of the town, and then kind of start with the center and work our way outward, we might be able to find a solution that way.
Okay, that's good. And by the way, if I could just comment back to Dennis's remarks, and Dennis, you're absolutely right, we haven't we haven't absolutely decided on the the nature of the makeup we're going to have. But I did decide that there seemed to be the greatest consensus that that would be the direction we were heading. So I didn't mean to, you know, rule out any other possibility, but that was my reason for, you know, going with that particular method. So does anybody else have any particular questions or concerns, anything you want to throw out? Eric, go right ahead.
Sure. So I think maybe weighing in, just to echo a lot of what has already been said, but just to add my support for it. Appreciate all the work you did to pull together the options. I know that's not easy. You know, I think I also tend to think of Bridgewater maybe in those three sections. And when I talk to people, they're usually talking about issues in one of those three areas. It's, I don't often hear someone talk about something that sort of blurs the lines. And so if there is an option, you know, that allows us to maybe, you know, think in terms of the two sides and the center, I think that's ideal. I think to Bill's point, you know, precinct five is tricky. I think it's also tricky if we decided to go with nine counselors. Probably be tough to get somebody consistently coming from that precinct. But I do like the idea of maybe starting with something in the middle, trying to sort of define what that center band is, and then look at the two edges after that.
Thank you. Thank you.
And Fred, that's all. I was gonna echo the same sentiment as Councilor Moore and Councilor Wood. I think that for the longest time, you hear a central focus downtown, or you hear people refer to east and west. We chop up that town the way, that way with police and fire. So it certainly makes sense that those areas all have sort of very unique challenges, and I think it makes sense. So I certainly love the idea of thinking along those lines, if we can find a starting point.
Okay, so maybe there really are these natural communities of interest, and, and maybe that should be our kind of focus in selecting districts. Okay.
Okay. So just food for thought, I'll throw this one out, because I did mention it before. One permutation could be kind of in these bands. So, so the east side might be, you know, 394. And Fred, I think four still has the, is prison in it, right?
Yes, it does.
Yeah. So there again, a large population that doesn't necessarily focus, there are issues surrounding the area. So three, 394 is a grouping, seven, 712 as a grouping, and then 685 is a grouping. So 685 represents kind of the center. 394 represents the east side, and 127 represents the west side.
And that is certainly doable. You know, that, that whole mix is certainly doable. I mean, you know, may, maybe, maybe we've wrapped it up right there. I don't know. Frank?
Yes, I, what was just said was what I was going to say. I'm always a guy who sits back and lets everyone talk. I had looked this thing over, I had done some study on it and looked at what was going on in town in different areas. And I came out with that same solution. I thought one, two, and seven, and you know, split it up to east, west, and middle. I think that's a good divide. You know, 475 or something like that, 492, you know?
Okay.
You know, split him up, what Bill had just said, what Erica had said, I think that's, makes a lot of sense.
Okay.
I would also support the grouping that Council would just, just added.
Does Sean or Peter have anything they want to add? Opposition or support?
Still chewing on it.
Okay. That's no problem either.
Yeah, I mean, it's a lot of good points, but a lot of moving parts to this. And, and I know, you know, earlier, you know, someone said, for the most part, a lot of things that we deal with are commute, we'll say precinct-specific, but we probably have some things coming down the road that's gonna be townwide that won't really gravitate towards one particular area or not. So I just, you know, from my perspective, looking at it, as long as where, as best we can, putting the representation that doesn't put one area at a definite advantage over others. Hence the reason I'm not a fan of total, you know, nine councils at large. You know, that, that just becomes somewhat of a little bit of concern if we've got a concentration of, you know, precincts and districts, and just seeing a lot of individuals coming out of there. Not to say that they're bad, but you know, like anything else, human nature, you're gonna gravitate towards the things that directly affect your backyard. And we just want to make sure that it's as fair as equitable, equitable as possible.
So if I could, Bill, if I can ask you, I'm 99% on board with what you said. I did, for my own clarification, precinct two and eight. So what would you consider, am I muted? No. What would you consider the central to District Eight? Because the northern part of two is sort of near the downtown, so what, what, what's in eight that makes it more part of downtown? I mean, just, just trying to clarify my.
I would, well, first of all, I was trying to make, you know, adjacent blocks, because it doesn't make sense to have skips blocks. But if you look at like the, like, for example, the proposal for the fire stations, right? So, so the fire station two currently sits on Plymouth Street, which is, I think, on this map. I think it's either six or, or five, the way it's positioned. And then the new fire station potentially is out in, where is that? Is that seven at that point?
Only one.
Seven or one, yeah. And so you've got services like that. Eight, eight itself by itself, you know, has, the way it's split up, if you look at the central square area, I don't know if you can zoom in. Zooming in on that, but I could email it to Josh if he wants to. Put it up on the screen. But anyway, if you zoom in on the map, the corner of eight is really half of Central Square.
Okay.
The triangle with the academy building. So it's got Church Street, it's got Main Street there. You know, so, and then, and then five splits out at Grove Street and goes out toward the university. So there, you know, currently there's a fire station there, but who knows, you know, what the, what the end result will be. So central area to me just reads the 685 a little bit more than say two, which does have, which does have Bedford Street in it going southbound. You know, so it is part of, if you think of Bedford Street as the east-west line, it, it kind of falls to the, two kind of falls to the western side of town, that split.
Right, no, I think, I think that scenario makes sense. If we're gonna stick with, if we're gonna do three and six.
Um, yeah, also, if I can jump in with a little more information, you may already know, I talked to, talked to the town clerk earlier, or late last, late last week, I guess. So when we get into the election process, you know, obviously, if we end up with the three district model, we will want to have whoever represents those three areas. You know, the, the cycle will be one a year. And so when we get into the election model, and, you know, the, the office will have to determine how the, how this is picked, but you know, one will have a, for the April election, one will have a one year, another one will have a two-year, and the third in the district model will have the three-year. And then for the at-large folks, I think Dennis, you're still, you fall into the special category of whatever your areas. And then the enlarges will have a one, two, and three-year. I don't remember how many years you have left on your, your contract there. You know, to the, so when we, if we, if we decide to run again, maybe nine new people completely, but you'd be running for like a specific term if you're running in at-large, and just whatever the term is for the district to be. Satchman for district. And I thought that makes sense. I don't know if we had heard that before. It's just that I'd share it with them.
Well, I love where we're headed, so let's keep talking about it. What, what is the next step that we have to figure out in order to keep it, the ball moving?
I would suppose that it's a matter of determining what model we want. You know, do we want the six-at-large counselors and three district counselors, or some variation?
Well, okay. Obviously, we can't take a vote, but certainly could do a straw poll here, just to get a sound.
I defer to Attorney Rawlins. I don't know if this is in the scope of, this is supposed to be just districting, not having a discussion around how many precinct and district councils we have, but you may want to run it by him first.
I mean, I, I think, you know, you guys are having a good discussion. I think it's fine to talk about it. I wouldn't bother taking a vote at this point. I just have it. Someone proposed it on the next, the next town council meeting. I think you already have some pending legislation, right, that you can all move, or someone can move to amend in a form that you think, and then you can start the discussion specific as to voting on it via that kind of amendment process. I think it's probably the best next step in my mind.
So short of a vote, you know, a straw poll unofficial, but but the purpose of this is so that we don't bring this back to council and hash this out there, trying to get some consensus that we can start drafting stuff, so we have some direction. So if there's opposition to it, I'd rather hear it now than in another week.
Well, I'm in, I'm in favor of the three district, six at-large council format. And I'm comfortable, I'm comfortable with the, the districts that Council would suggest it. I guess my one question would be, is that something we, do we decide the three, and we decide the three and six, if that's where we're going, but do we also vote the district boundaries too, or is that?
Yeah, okay. Yeah, because, because what we'll do is, we'll amend the charter changes to be explicit about those things, so that we don't have any confusion, obviously, going down the road in elections and so on and so forth.
Okay, I agree. I agree. I would like to see three and six, three districts, as Bill would suggested, and six at-large counselors. That's where I am.
My unofficial opinion?
Yeah, go ahead. You're up.
I just repeat with Council and just finished saying the three precincts, three and six, and the split, just the way we talked about east, west, and center. That would be an opinion which I think I would go with.
I, I would also go with that. I'm in favor of the three districts, the six at-large, and Councilor Wood's grouping proposal. And Councilor Woods', uh, grouping proposal.
I may be in the minority of this, but I'm still not. Totally against that, but I'm also still mulling over the four and three. And the reason I'm, I'm saying that is, um, kind of what I was alluding to earlier where. Depending on how the, the precincts fall, which I kind of have an understanding. I think you, as best we can balance off the individual. Coverage, I'll say for precincts versus the districts, especially if you have a district. That encapsulates a pretty big area of voting block. Um. So in essence, you could have conceivably. In the three and six. Um. I think you could have probably up to what? Four people would say from the same. Same precinct. Um, or actually I think it would be three, if I did the math right, either three or four. Which is not terrible, but. I would kind of like to keep it as even as possible, but that's just, that's just my personal opinion on the, the four and three.
So, so when you said four and three, do you mean like four at large and three districts?
Yes.
Yeah. Um, yeah, I, I think I heard that before too. It did. The one nice thing about staying at the nine. Is that you, on each election cycle in, in this model. You'd have two at-large and one district. And, um, and, and I agree, there's, there's going to be hot topics somewhere in our future. Where, you know, some, some, some neighborhood decides that they're going to put up two people or something like that, but. Um, but I think you're going to have enough separation with two, two, two in the cycles. And hopefully we could avoid that i- i- concentration. And it's probably only for one election cycle because whatever the issue is probably going to dissolve away anyway. Either those people are going to solve it or they're, they're going to make it worse and get, get unelected the next time.
Okay, certainly sounds like I'm hearing a consensus that's building at least some support, uh, for this direction. Um, would it make sense to talk out the next step? So figuring out the. What they might look like.
We can't take a vote here, right?
No.
Votes here. So next step, put it on the agenda for tomorrow night. Do we meet tomorrow? No, the.
No.
No, um. November second, we have it on the agenda for final vote. What else would be, what else? I'm just, I don't know what else we need to do. We just vote on the, vote on the makeup and then vote on the districts. We already decided on not, we did vote nine precincts last meeting, and I believe the consensus. Then was to have nine counselors. And tonight would be used to workshop hash out. How many precincts we would like to create within those nine. Precincts, and I think we're pretty much there.
No, create the districts within the priest.
Right.
With the precincts.
I mean, there's two counselors aren't here tonight either, so I don't, oh no, there's one against one.
Well, he misses the.
We, we did have a brief discussion, uh, I think it was when Eric first introduced the prospect of, of having, uh. That model of, of six at-large and three district and. The point was raised, uh, maybe, maybe Eric raised it, that, uh. If we were to go with a lesser number, lesser total number of counselors like seven, uh, that, uh, Sean just referenced, well. There's that much more work that's being put on the seven. In terms of committee assignments and, and otherwise, you know, constituent responses, whatever it might be. Uh, you know, I, I kind of think that. You know, we're at a point where I, I, I think nine is, is where we should be. Um. You know, way back when, being some weeks ago, we actually talked about, right, the possibility of. Increasing the number of counselors and, and I think we decided that, you know, that's. Probably not necessary, but I'm also a little adverse to decreasing the number of counselors. Uh, just my thought.
Yeah, I, I agree with that. I, I may have raised that. That was one of my concerns. I think if you go to fewer counselors. Um, you know, there's a lot of work we're trying to push through and we'd be asking, I think, a lot. To potentially, you know, that could. That could be a reason that people don't get involved. And so I wanted to avoid, avoid that scenario. Um, I, I, I like the idea that the, uh, or the at-large come in to a year as well. Cause I did hear some feedback from some residents where they were concerned about sort of like stacking. You know, the, the council. And in my head, I, I sort of worked through what it would actually take to do that. It would take multiple years. You know, I think to, to Bill's point, the, the issue would have to be alive for multiple years. Um, so I, I'm not as concerned about the idea of stacking. Um, you know, I, I. Of all of the options we have, I feel like it's probably the best one, right? One district to at-large. You know, every year that changes. So I still stand by the nine.
And just throughout, uh, for the conversation, um, that's there. I, I see that the town clerk is here. Is there any interest in just hearing any conversation as to what we're sort of coming to a consensus about? Any objection you should say?
No.
Question. Okay. Merrily Hunt, I, I see that you're there. I, I just wanted to open up the floor and opportunity, if you want to just give your perspective as the town clerk to what you're hearing in this conversation tonight, if, if you want to.
Oh boy, don't put Carlton in charge. We'll never hear you.
Are you muted, Merrily?
I think she acts, oh, no, she's not muted.
Okay.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Oh, all right. Sorry. I, uh, since I was in the same room with Carlton, I chose to not turn my audio on when we started. I saw, I was just listening. Um, so.
Carlton is dead air on these meetings, by the way, just to let you know.
It's so funny. He believes that you have him blocked some way because he can be heard on every other Zoom call he's on, except the town council ones. So, um, so do you have specific questions for me?
No, I was actually just opening it up to you, um, based on the conversation that you're hearing, if you had any other comments or feedback for the council.
Sure. The, the only, the only, uh, comments I would have is just speaking as a, as a citizen. Um, I've, I've been hearing from people, this is a confusing project, uh, process for people. And my suggestion would have been, I think I made it a couple of times, to try to keep the original, um, precinct number. You can only have three of those, like one, two and three. But for those three existing precincts, trying to keep one. Not, not combine two or three with one or not combine two or three with each other. Yep. I don't know if I'm saying it right. So you would still have a precinct one that included the old precinct one. And you would have a precinct two that included the old precinct two. And you'd have a precinct three that included the old precinct three. That way, at least for those citizens, it wouldn't, certainly isn't going to be for the majority. But for those citizens, there would be a few who were still remaining in their original, uh, precinct. But if it makes it too complicated. Uh, I certainly don't mean to throw any additional complications in there. It had only been a thought, um, when, when I took a look at it. To think that it, it might be helpful for those, those people.
But I think what you're saying, Merrily, is, is that if we use the approach we've been talking about as a possibility. Here on the west, uh, we do have precinct one.
Right.
So this. Right, the district of comprised of one, seven. I guess one, seven and two, if I've got that right, or, uh, that could be considered district one, right?
Or you could do one, seven, and four.
Right, and then, and then.
The little, to get the little, uh, fewer, fewer population four in with seven and one, which are. Um, I mean, they're all equal population, right? But.
Right.
Voters that you, you'd be combining it with bigger voters. And then something with two, so that same thing, maybe two, five and eight or something like that. And then six, three and nine, because they're all divided by three. But anyway, that, that was just, that had just been a thought of mine was that those, those people who are currently in one. Some of them will still stay in one, in three, some of them still stay in three. It's, but it's not a biggie. I mean, it's not a biggie. It was just a thought.
Okay.
Can you, um, you know, we talked the other day, can you just maybe describe to everybody about the notification if we get this done with the census?
Oh, sure. Oh, sure. Um, hopefully we'll have this done in time that, uh. The, the state rules are, we're supposed to put this out with the census. So our census comes out between Thanksgiving and, and Christmas. And, um, it will say right on the census, this is your new precinct. We're talking about having it be a tear off at the bottom of the census. That people will be able to keep it. We always put all the election, all the coming election dates for the next year. On the bottom of the census anyway, for people to tear off and keep. So we'll, we've, we're trying to talk to them about doing it in a, possibly a color. Like red or something like that. So people would see it and, and remember it. Um, so that's, that's the plan, uh, to get the word out to all citizens. Well before nomination papers are, are pulled in early January. And I'm happy to hear suggestions if people have, have thoughts of some, uh. Some way they prefer to have it done.
Any other questions? Seeing none. Well, we appreciate your, uh, giving us some input on, in your thoughts on what you've heard tonight. I think we have some. Good steps, uh, made some progress tonight for next week and, um, I, I'll work with Councilor Chase and anyone else that wants to. Move to the next, take it to the next step for next week. I assume Councilor Chase wants to take the lead on this.
Uh, I'm, I'm happy to, uh, you know, frankly, I, I. Uh, I, I think we've already accomplished quite a bit tonight. Because frankly, you know, having run all those permutations, I thought we might be scratching out, you know, districts, you know, for most of the evening. Uh, but since we seem to have a, a, a general consensus, uh. You know, I, I think we've made a lot of progress.
Good. As long as you just keep the ball moving as we understand the timeline. So. We'll get something prepared for next week. And if we have to do another workshop at another date for the same thing, I would suggest that is again. So unless there's any other discussion, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Adjourn second.
All right, we got a second, uh, Josh for roll call.
Yep, Matt.
Yes.
Fred.
Yes.
Sean.
Yep.
Peter. Bill.
Yes.
Frank.
Yes.
Fred.
Yes.
Dennis.
Yes.
Thank you. Eight in favor, zero against.
Thank you, everyone, for your time.
Thank you all.
Have a good night.
Good night.